Twenty minutes?
A little bit.
Six.
Do that. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. Now the round.
Good.
Thank you.
Discussion. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. Well, you got JB?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Next item is authorized to determine the sale of order agreement for purchase of a model DS eight fifty high-speed digital image scanner for your county elections. Anyone who wants to say that?
If anybody has any questions.
How long before it last year or during budget process? What was that?
How long? You've got a warranty on it, have you?
Yeah, so neither one.
Hi, both of you?
Thank you.
Discussion. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. Motion on the Danbury and Castleman?
Move to appoint Jessica Meyer to replace Laura Gibson's track.
Thank you.
Discussion. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carries.
Morning supervisors. Thank you. It's my pleasure this morning to introduce Clark Meyer. We've been working with Clark over the past months regarding a transload fly ash facility. We're going to bring up some mapping here and we'll try to get us in the, give you a brief explanation of where this thing sits. You're sitting at the intersection of two hundred and sixtieth street and Port Neal Road. Mr. Meyer's company is called Rail to Road Transloading and they have entered into negotiations with the current owner of this parcel, which is Mid-American Energy Company, to long-term lease this portion of the parcel east of the railroad track. And the facility will be placed in this location and he'll explain the site plan as he gets to explaining his total project. With that, I'll turn it over to Clark. Clark is divisional manager for a company out of Sioux Falls, South Dakota and Sweetman Construction is the holding company. They've established a new entity called Rail to Road for this particular facility. With that, I'll turn it over to Clark.
Thank you, John. John, I thought it'd be a good idea that I just present maybe to you guys what we're doing and be happy to answer your questions today. First of all, just a little overview of fly ash. I'm not sure how familiar everyone is with it, but when you burn coal to make power, the residue is the ash and the ash is used by, majority by concrete producers, so ready mix companies or paving companies. And the problem those came up with was in the winter, when ready mix concrete usage is down, the fly ash gets buried into Mid-America landfill. And then lately, the last few summers, there's been a shortage of ash. And so, we went before Mid-America and Headwaters and proposed that let's build a storage facility, basically to store some of the ash that we're burying during the winter and give them the opportunity to market that during the, during the summer months. We currently have a facility similar to this in Sioux Falls area and that's where we built our relationship with Mid-America or with Headwaters. And so, we've proven ourselves there and when we came last fall with a proposal to them, they were very accepting, so. So basically, it's kind of a three-way partnership between Mid-America and that's the land that we talked about, the releasing ourselves is going to own, build and operate the facility, and Headwaters, who is currently in charge of marketing all the ash. Go ahead, John. So basically, in our proposal, we're going to construct two large fly ash storage silos. Each are going to contain 10,000 tons of storage each and then trucks will come in, load them out and send them on their way. Right now, the facility we operate is in the city limits of Sioux Falls and so we're certainly familiar with dust control and all the environmental things to be friendly neighbors and comply with all the regulations. As John said, the major choice of making this, the choice facility is between Port Neal three and four and so, as those being the producers of the fly ash, made sense to try and position ourselves near the interstate for easy access, but also near the power plants. And so, we feel like we have a very good site there. Basically, this is an overview of the site plan and you can know where at and go ahead, John, the next one will zoom in. Just going to have incoming traffic on the right there and all these, all these traffic will be the pneumatic tankers, which you see on the road all the time, which are totally enclosed. There's a stairway and access station to open the trucks. They pull onto the scale where they get loaded and then as they exit to the left, they close their hatch and going down the road. So, feel like we have a good traffic flow here that get the customers in and out and one thing we do, that happens now because our own company does it, is at the Port Neal site, there's trucks parking on the road down there. This should eliminate this. And eventually, our long-term plan is to get to twenty-four-seven self-loading, which we have in other facilities. And some of the guys like to start early and they can come in anytime, day, night, weekend, and they'll have, will have a system where they do their badge and their card reader and, and self-load themselves. So, that's eventually the, where we want to get. This is a three-D model of the facility, so basically, it's the two large silos we spoke of and the office there, you see, of course, we'll probably have a roof on that. And then there's a couple day loadout silos.
How does you get to that facility?
We're gonna, we're gonna haul it by truck, a couple dedicated trucks from, from the power plants at that facility. That's a good question. So basically, the facility, I have two to three full-time employees and then we're gonna have, like you just asked, two semi-trucks that'll just go between the power plants and this site. And basically, as I asked about increased traffic, if you take the 20,000 tons that been buried every winter and you market that, that's another 800 truckloads that'll be sold out of there. But currently, they average about 4,000 truckloads out of there already, currently. And like I talked about, we want to eliminate the trucks waiting on the road and be on the site.
I'm curious as to, in our day conversion to actually add.
There, this facility is not, no. Other facilities have, they've just spent a lot of money meeting the new regulations, burning coal still. As you notice, I didn't mention power plants, one and two, those two are, they don't have the visible fly ash that they produce. And those two may be shut down, I'm not sure. I can answer for that. Any other questions, Aaron?
You're not using rail?
No, as, as we designed the site, we had laid out the whole site next to the rail line and if the need ever came to receive or ship by rail, we certainly have that possibility and that ability. At our current facility in Sioux Falls, not to get too tactical, but this power plant produces a type C fly ash and there's some projects that require a type F fly ash. We used to get our F fly ash from North Dakota until the oil boom up there depleted the supply. So currently in Sioux Falls, we're unloading F fly ash from rail cars from Texas. And so, we certainly have laid this thing out and you can see the rail line actually drawn on that site plan, that's not going to be built. It's along the, it's at the west side of the silos there. But right now, we don't see the need, but we're certainly laying ourselves out, so if that need arose, we have the capability.
So you have two to three full-time people, are they the truck drivers too?
Yeah, yes.
Forty thousand trucks per year?
That's what goes out there now.
What will it be after this?
Forty-eight hundred.
A lot of trucks.
Lot of trucks.
So you have contracts with standard variable?
Those, those are, all the, yes, all the local renovation guys are currently the customers now and will continue to be.
Do they come in from Sioux Falls to get there?
I would say that the fly ash could services probably 150 mile radius. So yeah, everyone comes down here and now, and they will continue.
And they, now, what do they use fly ash for?
It uses a mineral filler in Portland cement concrete. So it's like a, and it's, it actually increases the quality of it and, and you keep it from going to landfill, so it's, it's kind of a win-win situation.
I think they have grown up, they use it on the roads.
And they, they can use it, they can still use it as a soil stabilizer too. Yep, that's another use for it.
Sounds like a win-win.
Very usual.
So, yeah, so for timeline, we definitely want to have it completed by November first, so when the construction season winds down, we can begin filling the silos. So it's going to be a busy summer, hopefully.
Great deal.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, supervisors.
Good morning.
Good morning. I can see you.
I know, and I don't have my glasses on, so I can't see you. Okay, this is the final stage of the, the review and approval, our approval from the, for the contract. I gave you two different papers. One is the information sheet and that list, who was on the committee that we talked about? One was myself, one was Doug Harold, who was the, our AEA teacher for probably the last thirty-plus years, and then Diane McTeer, who was our caseworker and also union president, that way we had union representation on it. We listed all the people that we contacted. We went through legal notice. We also contacted through telephone contacts and through emails. We contacted nine different providers, fiber local providers of those, and we only received two bids were submitted. One was through Center Plate, which is located through Convention Center. Their bid was five eighty per meal. CBM was the second one and they're out of Sioux Falls and they provided two different proposals. First proposal was based solely on a variable scale and that would be based on the population count plus five staff. The second one is a four ninety-five flat rate, which is also our current cost. At five eighty per meal for Center Plate, what we did is Diane did an eighteen-month average and that was sixteen, also including staff for lunch and supper. And for breakfast, we don't include staff, so that, I believe averaged to twelve residents per day. For CBM, for sixteen per day, that came out to 101,616 dollars. I did also include breakfast if we, if that was changed to where we could only, if we could order just for the residents and not staff, that came out to 93,148 dollars. For first proposal for CBM, if based on a sixteen meal count, that was 84,972 dollars. And as, on a flat rate, which didn't include staff for breakfast, that came out to 79,497 dollars. That was a cost savings of 5,475 dollars or six percent. Based on the cost factor itself, the committee recommended the four ninety-five because it allowed us to control the cost and meal count. The variable scale goes up and down as, as well as the cost goes up and down. So that's, on that basis, we recommended the four ninety-five flat rate.
And it's a one-year contract?
This is a one-year contract, but it can extend?
For extra years if the board wants to. It's renewable every year.
Isn't that what this is? And we signed it last year and then we opened it up?
Yeah, and you wish to open it up, yes.
And you can change from the flat rate to the variable rate anytime?
No, that would be the one-year contract. Yes, sir.
The only thing I didn't see here listed also, do you have a snack rate?
There is a point eighty-five cent per snack and, or bulk, and I didn't include that in either CBM or, or that.
Because there's a purchase difference price, what was that price normally?
The way the state has it, they, they set an eighty-five cent, that's the rate the state, if we have the snack reimbursement and we don't have snack reimbursement. So if, say there's a snack that we cannot buy in bulk, then each snack we purchase will cost us eighty-five cents.
Okay.
If it's something we buy in bulk, then we pay the bulk rate.
And can you, can you go out and buy the snacks yourself without having to go through CDM?
Sometimes we do.
Like going to Sam's or something?
We've never gone to Sam's, but, but we've gone to Hy-Vee, we have an account with Hy-Vee and we've gone there when we've run out. I mean, it, it does happen.
Okay.
James?
James and Bruggan Tax Spirits Research Council. I just want to say that I'm happy with the outreach trying to find more bidders for this contract and it was great to see the improvement this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't set that.
Sorry. Benny?
Just one minor question. I know it came up last time with the CBM. If they have thirty meals average a day, they only order twenty, they only pay for twenty, or they still have to pay for thirty each of ten meals?
We pay for twenty.
Okay, so I knew there was one before where they're saying they weren't making enough because they were having a number of meals they thought they were going to serve?
Under this flat rate, we'll only be ordering what we need. Under the scale rate, the way they got it set up, we would be forced to order what the highest census plus staff was each day, which in the morning, we may have a census of twenty-six because kids are coming overnight and then those kids get released. They don't eat a meal, we don't order a meal for them, but we'd be stuck paying the twenty-six.
On variable rate?
Yeah.
So this, this is staying from the American yet.
Right.
Do you want to make this, this for here, where it's going here?
Are they renewable?
Yeah, right, right.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Nell.
Right on time. This morning, we have a bid opening for a culvert project on Lenox Avenue. This is a replacement of an existing bridge with a corrugated metal pipe culvert. This isn't something we can do everywhere, but here is a location where it was hydraulically inadequate structure. We, well, this will be the third one of these up in this part of the county. This would be a mile west and about three miles south of Peterson.
Is this in the regular budget or is it a special program?
This is in the regular budget. We don't have any revenue from the special program until next business call, so. I, I can't afford to start doing those. You'll probably start seeing those come in, fall lettings. You know, we still have work to do on, on getting those designed. We, we didn't try and get too far out in front of ourselves with, with working on projects that until we knew we were going to have the money. Do we, do we have enough bid tabs out there?
Yeah.
Alright. The first one is from Dixon Construction of Correctionville. Total price, 117,251 dollars. Next one is from Nelson and Rock Contracting of Anowa, Iowa. Bid price, 71,886 dollars. Next, we have LA Carlson Contracting of Merrill, Iowa. 66,744 dollars. Six-six-seven-four-four. I like that bid. Well, I liked Nelson and Rock's too. Nelson and Rock, if you remember, has the other two culverts that we let earlier. Spring weather has slowed their mobilization into the county. Next one is from Clark Construction of Whiting, Iowa. He put his in two envelopes this time. I always check to make sure that the bid bond is included, even if I don't read or mention it, so. Their bid is 79,978 dollars and forty cents. Seven-nine-nine-seven-eight-forty.
Need to look these over?
I would like to, just to make sure they have no errors in their bid fabulations.
Okay, there we go. Second.
Discussion. All votes? All votes in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. People are still hungry.
What's that?
People are still hungry.
Yes. We're trying to get more bridges cranked out, so we'll have one coming on Michigan Avenue here. Trying to get it knocked out for July. It's going to depend on permitting at this point in time. We're also working on one up on one-hundred-twentieth Street. Bronson Bridge is being worked on. You'll see a lot of bridges coming through over the next twelve months as we work through the fiscal year 2014 program. Again, the four bridges that are in the special levy, you'll, you won't start to see them until late fall, mid-winter, but then there'll be time for spring lettings. We need to have a little cash flow coming in before we can start sending it out, especially with all the work going on down at CF Industries. CF with the Rise project is a reimbursement program, so we need to be able to front the money and I've got to kind of watch our cash flow as we go through the year, so.
Do you guys use fly ash for anything?
There will be fly ash in the concrete going down on the Danbury Road. It's anywhere from fifteen to twenty percent of every cubic yard of concrete going into a bridge or a pavement, so. You know, this is not a bad thing for us to see more of that material being saved instead of landfill. Having another 20,000 tons available within the region isn't a bad thing for us. We have used it on a couple of road stabilizations. You have to watch which roads you put it in. Typically, you don't put it underneath an asphalt necessarily because you get a base that's so rigid that it will crack, just like a concrete pavement does and that'll reflect up into the asphalt. But in unstable areas under a Portland cement concrete road, it can be a real saver for a base stabilizer. You know, it's one of those where you watch your soil type and it's, it's one of those things we pull out of our bag of tricks when we have a need for something on, on one of our roads, so. I, I think that development's a good thing. I've looked at the driveways down on it and been involved with the engineering plans for the site development, so. I'm, I'm glad to see them bringing this through. I think it's a good thing for us. Thank you.
Thank you. In relation back when we talked about bridges, you know, the bridge of Platte Top Morse, where I think a truckhead structure, the bridge collapsed, the, they had on the news where one out of nine bridges nationwide are structurally unsafe. At least here in whatever county, we have the ability to go ahead and try to fix the things that are structurally unsafe. But one out of nine in the nation are bad. So at least March is trying to hear the rest of the board and the road people try to correct the problems nationwide. What do you see bids doing over the next year?
I, I look for, I don't look for a lot of cost increase in our bridges. I think we're in a period here where contractors are looking for work. You know, the, the bids today, we were estimating right around 75,000 based on what we looked at and, and project costs on the last two pipes that we let. This one being a little bigger, a little longer. The 71,000 dollar bid with Nelson and Rock was right on target with what we were estimating. Carlson came in very, very low, so again, we're pleased to see it. But I, I'm not looking at a lot of cost increase based on what I'm seeing from talking to Christiansen Brothers and Dixon and them. They're, they are looking for work. Last year, with as dry as it was, nobody lost any working days. They kept moving right along and so the bridge contractors that are looking for work were just trying to get some kicked out. Couple of bigger projects, we might be looking, a little consulting help, just, we've got so much going on with CF and the bridges, we're, we're looking at maybe letting some of that work out, so. We'll be back to the board when we need those kind of things over the next few months.
Do you see prices in concrete go up with as many facilities under usual category right now? You know, with the building of the roads, you've got the new road that you want to build, you've got bridges, will prices go up on concrete? I don't want to use the, that, that, it seems like concrete prices usually go up.
Well, I think we've seen a cost increase in the, in the range of, of three to five percent per year. You know, right now, things are holding fairly steady. I don't think we're going to see, the, the biggest thing that's affecting all of our prices on materials right now, I believe, is transportation costs and fuel. You know, when we're, when we're over three and a half dollars a gallon for diesel fuel, we're seeing that kind of increases going on. It doesn't matter if it's asphalt, if it's cement, if it's fly ash, all of those components are higher because of the cost of transportation. This year, on our gravel bid that I'm getting ready to go here, we're looking at ordering 8,000 tons less than the quote than we did last year, just because we're anticipating higher costs in each of the stockpiles. It's not that we don't need that, it's just that I couldn't find any more money to build into it. If, if we do get favorable prices where they hold the line with last year, we'll probably add some back in. Part of our problem too is our pit at Railroad Edwards, which is the one north of Correctionville, may be played out. If that's the case, we'll be pulling everything out of Gothea and by the Little Sioux Park. All of those are going to be longer haul rates to everything that's in the north half of county. So we could be, you know, last year, we ended up 2,600 tons shy of what we had planned because we ended up bringing gravel out of Gothea to finish our stockpiles at Mobile and beyond Banner Township, so. You know, again, that's, that's part of what we're anticipating in cost. I'm waiting for Hallet to get back to me on, we co-own that Railroad Edwards pit with Hallet. They have the southeastern part, we have the northwestern part. They were going to try and get in and dig some test holes, but, yeah, it's, it's not looking good right now and we're working together to try and come up with new haul distances so that the haul rates can be established for all of our stockpiles this year. But, you know, we just see.
Cash goes down.
What's that?
Capital cash goes down.
Well, yes, it would be good if we'd start, seeing some refineries come back online would be the first help. It's unfortunate that we couldn't get a new one built right in our backyard. I mean, that, that would really lower our... Well, yes, it would be good if we'd start, seeing some refineries come back online would be the first help. It's unfortunate that we couldn't get a new one built right in our backyard. I mean, that, that would really lower our fuel cost. If we were getting some of the gasoline and diesel fuel out of something made that close. What's that? Well, we're talking about it, but, any other questions or issues coming up?
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Next item is discussion started date for a board retreat. Dave, you have a question?
What is that? What are we gonna do?
Talk about a list of problems that we've got, things that are going on, possible losses. It's gonna be important. Just something for the whole work. You know, I mean, with one at a time, all the time, you just don't get a feel for what the entire board is thinking, so. With the retreat, you know, the directions direction. Anyway, I'm thinking about next week, I've gotta get a little break, see if we can use the nature center out there.
Larry, assuming one of our topics is gonna be maybe a direction for economic development.
I've got that on my list.
I know you and I had the privilege of meeting with Dana Durham, and I'm wondering if there's any way that we could invite her. I know she has a very tight schedule, but if she could come, I would like all the supervisors to hear what we hear, and for her also to further explain the mega site certification, and what, imply, whatever that word is. Implications there. Sorry, everybody. For county and the city and as a region, so. I'm hesitant to set a date until we contact her. I thought maybe you as chair of the board would be the appropriate person to make a phone call or reach out and just see if we can do like, if she can't come, a telephone conference, or she could send a representative. You know, she just really relayed that we have so many opportunities here, and, and. I think it would be a good addition to our retreat, if possible.
Let's set a tentative date for next week sometime, and, you know, make a phone call and see if she can attend or a day or two over the, that much, that much.
How about Tuesday afternoon?
Everyone, everyone gonna be here next Tuesday?
Yeah, but, I guess maybe one of us day.
I know, but, I mean.
We have a jail meeting on Wednesday. Monday afternoon or morning? And I have a self-live.
We've got a ten o'clock. Actually, Tuesday, we're gonna have eleven o'clock tour of the country.
Oh, we are? We are? Well.
First of all, Mr. Butler.
Can we do it in two weeks, so just have our board meeting now there too? Have a part of a board meeting?
We've got the region act.
We'll do a half a day, start at eight, eight-thirty.
You do that?
Be done by, yeah.
How's eighteen, what?
Eighteen, two, perfect.
First, we're pushing back two weeks now.
I know, but that gives, um, the eighteenth is the employee. Oh, so that'll be that day.
We can cancel the paper.
We've gotta change data in that region. What about Friday, the fourteenth? It's flying day.
It's flying day?
That's my calendar. First of my glasses, I'm not sure that's correct.
Let's see.
That works for me.
Morning?
Yes.
Let's set a tentative rate for nine o'clock. And I'll try and get all the, maybe sixteen, ten, two, or that's, the other papers should be better.
Back at you.
All right. Wish you heard.
Mark?
The Hundred Canyon Alliance meeting is Friday. The, the board members want to attend. It's a couple hours away, so.
Shannon, go.
Yeah. Well, either Ben or I will go, we might both go attend that number wrapped page project. One of us will have to stay aligned with it, so. But, you know, we do take a lot of money out of that group, so we try to make sure we attend and appreciate the board's support when, when those meetings do come up.
All right, sir. Is there anyone else?
Dave, you have a budget for that twenty-four seven?
Yes.
You didn't send the income. Can you go hold it and get the income? And this doesn't make much difference without you.
That's brought in, right?
Okay.
Okay, let's recess until ten forty-five. Well, we can start it. We had the sheriff there one time, but he's disappeared.
He didn't wanna talk.
He didn't, he don't wanna participate. Let's start with Mr. Butler.
Okay, I only have two things. The first thing is, we are starting to get our budget certifications back from the state of Iowa for our tax rates. Once they're back, I start plugging them into the tax list, eventually we had a tax list drawn up. Last year, about three weeks earlier, hopefully we're right on time this year, and hopefully maybe a week or two earlier just to get it done. We have got back the county sets or city sets, certain extension. Obviously, those are the easiest ones certified back, so they do it the easiest first, and wait for more difficult ones later. Second thing is, we're getting ready to do our appropriation resolution, which they explained that a little bit. When the board does budgets, we do budget by department division by fund to give back to service areas. So all we certify to the state basically is a budget by service area. There are nine different service areas, such as public safety, amount of health, state programs, intergovernmental programs, or capital projects, things like that. What we do July first, to actually give the spending of forty-two of the department divisions, is do this resolution, which we'll have running before July first. In that resolution, the board can not increase your department division, they can decrease your department division if they so feel fit. Right now, there's just one or two because of certain circumstances where it's been explained why we're doing that. But generally, it's just whatever they approved in March is what you'll get in July first. But I have to spread the wages out, 'cause when we did the wage, because of negotiations, you always have to put a wage number in. Now we're spreading it back out to various departments. So actually, department division totals will have to be a little bit more. There is a three percent decrease in health insurance, it's already programmed in there, and it's yet to be seen if we'll be doing insurance holidays, but that'll be down real good if we do one. Other than that, that's about it. We will send, when I get these done, we can have each department division pull up, like the sheriff can pull up their eight or nine divisions, see where they're at for next year. Same way with everybody, so we'll let you know when that is complete. We're gonna do it before we actually do a published budget amendment, because we wanna write when I go to the office July first. We'll do the budget amendment, spreading all this money out, probably as first or second Tuesday in July. What we want, when we do the budget book, and departments look at their budget, wanna write at that point, except we're gonna do the amendment later. Any questions?
I have one.
Yes?
I thought we were going to do an insurance holiday in July?
No, that's not been determined yet.
Has not been determined?
No. We did reduce rates three percent in conjunction with J.D. and, um, Yelling, our consultant, and it's yet to be seen, you know, if we'll have any, the reserve will apply and I'll begin to insurance holiday. Potentially, yes, it's probably gonna happen, but definitely we do not know yet.
Okay, so just the three percent decrease?
Right.
Given in July?
Right, the question was back, and then when we did the budget, so it wouldn't be a tax increase, and that'll set, you know, some taxes there.
Mr. Malloy, just, all right. Do you, uh, still shooting for a, a favor based on your website that's coming up, I think, here next week or two, with the development website? I can ask you, I just look at your respective content areas, if you need training to be able to do your own content adjustments, set up those training sessions. Uh, there's a couple of cool apps up with the sheriff's department, making a nice headway on.
Isn't it too hard to pull up a, pull it up right now?
I think the address was, I would. I might go and do that, but I can text here, I can get it done here. Maybe we can go to the tail end at the first time. But we'll send out those links, looking for respective content areas, and again, the sheriff has a double three I's that we've been working on. One is warrants, one is jail, gun permits, and jail.
How are your service?
No, uh, right, I just, I got a work insight, and one warrants, who's one? One, and who's, who's in jail currently?
Who's in jail?
Who's in jail, so. There's also gonna be, the auditor has their. So auditor has a, have their tables up there each week, which will have the YouTube videos of, of the supervisor meetings, so. Again, would like to get this done by the end of the month, and encourage your, your feedback on that. Easy replacement continues, I think we're hitting first floor of courthouse, I think, treasure and event. We're happening at the end of this week, and let's keep plotting through that as we go through the summer, so.
Thank you, sir. I didn't leave this, skip over Mr. Butler.
Oh, no, you were going around that.
Our, our facilities are open, uh, kind of a slow process so far with the weather the way it is, but that's one of those springs. Got a few projects underway, I've been getting pretty good publicity on those, those will get finished up later this summer and this fall. We did have retired one of our forty-year, actually forty-one-year employee last Friday, and we're in the process of, got some promotions and transfers. We've got a position we're interviewing for here in a couple of weeks, so. Hope you're back full staff by first of July.
The canoe landings.
What about?
The canoe landings, that's a good article.
Thanks, Fred.
We're gonna do a canoe crash. Christopher.
The flight, didn't hurt anything, or how many of yours?
Throw a letter.
Start flooding?
Uh, we have a little bit of flooding, uh, floods in Cratchville over our trail, east side of the river, just like the water going out. But other flooding, unless it's a.
Is there a river?
Yeah, river doesn't bother me at all, but. But that was bad, off the trail within three days.
Okay. That's a very good.
Part of P and Z, I was wanting to board heard from a company railroad road out of Sioux Falls, South Dakota regarding five million dollar project down in Fort Neal, in this real area. Be a welcome addition to the tax base when that's done. Tomorrow is the June meeting of the Greater Sioux Land Task Force, primarily working on CF bill, as well as the ancillary bills in Mid-American and other locations, the casino. We have invited, on this round, we invited the six school board superintendents, who will be with us tomorrow morning regarding issues related to education. We'll get running up on that kind of thing. Supervisors Clausen, Monson serve on that task force, but you're all welcome to attend any of the meetings we have, their first coincident month. If you want the data or the add to the email list, just let us know, and we'll give you permission. Okay? Last thing, who owes to Mr. Malloy and his assistants in regards to getting this into rural economic developments database and email archives? So we've got access to all these things, and I appreciate everything.
That company that's gonna build here, the fly ash, is it gonna act more? People to your list that are gonna be housing and stuff?
This one, we don't see any significant impact on either education or housing, as a marginal number of employees, I think we just talked about three. Our big people here is the tax base. And how we best leverage that issue. Obviously, it's gonna have an affect, impact when you've got four to eight hundred loads going in, because they gotta buy gas and eat, all those things, so. I think we just keep moving on this and make sure we pack industry as well, let our industries know what's gonna happen. Uh, looks like contract again to probably get over four hundred thousand dollars back from the state for reimbursement in the county. Looks like it's back towards another hundred thousand dollars plus from the V.I.A., throughout eighty from the, uh, Dakota Union County, like, deferrals. We're still having a leak of the attention center, it looks like it's under the concrete pad in our, our, uh, recreation area. I think they may have to break it up to fix it, I don't know, it's been going on for several years, so they're trying to figure out what to do with it, so.
Thank you. About, I guess, I don't know that. Danny, we need to find out what's going on with all these leaks, 'cause we got leaks over at LECs.
We have two.
That have been there for at least a year. And one of those, we can write on those new visiting machines, so. We need to, uh, get with Mark, figure out what we can do with all these leaks.
I hear you.
Well, the, the LEC's been looking for years.
We're needing to go to computers now, and, uh, you know, they're kinda looking at several kinds, and they're not really sure. They, they believe the one under the concrete is because whoever put it out there didn't put the rubber mat underneath it correctly. So just keep seeking, especially when we get all this heavy rain, and we fill up three buckets of water. By the end of the, end of a couple of days, we can, it could be waterfall. Those are my buckets, so they're not just on the water.
I've never had any, you know, heard anything, Larry, I have, but communication's so key to everything. If there's a problem, let the chair know, or let the chair know, or Mark out, or let the chair know also. Or we can talk to ourselves. Then you gotta, sorry, the chair.
Judy. We just completed the new health insurance S.P.E. with all the changes in their PACA, which is a new healthcare plan. We got a lot of changes going into effect, starting in two thousand thirteen all the way to two thousand and eighteen. So those will be out in everybody's hands by July first. Please read them, Mark, if you've got questions, ask them, because there's gonna be a lot of change and things coming. A lot of things coming down the road, we're unsure of whether they come through or not, so we take a whole day to explain them, and I'm just not sure whether I'm right or wrong. The other thing that we have is, and we'll be going out to date everybody, is that the board approved two vision plans. Now, these are for blastons, contacts, whatever, but these are independent of county funding. These are being sponsored through the county. But what will happen is that you will be getting an email today with the types of plans, showing the plan, a registration form if you wanna participate. Your employees will get it too, a date and time to have it back, and then if you decide to participate, it'll be automatically reduction out of your payroll. Uh, there's two different plans, one sponsored by Ask Me, another is one which we were approached by. Both can be good plans, but on the side of what we're at, and we're not making, it's a recommendation of either we put together, or we thought, or two good plans, our employees may consume them on their own basis.
Is there an open door on that, or?
Yeah, that will be, uh, June first through seventeen.
Good job.
Uh, we've been working on an inhale sharing exercise, it's a pretty.
Uh, we've been working on an inhaler sharing exercise, it's a pretty unique event, contracted with the Intervent Bowl. And we started the exercise on April tenth, got twenty seven local law enforcement agencies in the sixteen county area. Three federal agencies, three state agencies, and then our regional office involved. So far, our office, just a regional information sharing office, has produced nineteen bulletments, which is information that the local law enforcement agencies have shared with us. Each of the twenty seven local agencies have all shot at least one bit of information, that we're seeing how that information is shared within the region, and how it goes up to the state, what the state might produce to get back to the locals, and how that's gonna look. Our regional offices are no longer funding what's gonna happen as far as what the state is going to be doing at that point. So, it's looking really good at what our office is doing right now. This whole thing, we're producing things like there's a, a website of an extremist group that's been created, that law enforcement can actively go on the website, there's little information that's loaded onto the website. Of people who are talking about planning different events and protests and so forth. There's been simulated thefts of chemicals from plants, there's been simulated surveillance of ethanol plants, um, and, uh. And then there's also been a small explosion where somebody was testing an explosive device. So, it's law enforcement's job to try and figure out what's going on here, all this information is gonna be finished through urgency management, which, um. Gary can probably tell you a little bit more about there, and that there's gonna be a functional exercise that they're doing next Thursday. And hopefully, the law enforcement representatives that are at the E O Cs in, I think, four different counties in this area. The law enforcement will share information that they have learned through the information shares that we've been doing the last few months. It's kind of unique, FEMA's got, I know they're just kinda watching what's going on with this whole thing, and it could be something that is really good for, uh, planning in the future for, for this type of situation. Also, we put it for the twenty thirteen grant, um, we don't know if we approve, and we probably won't find out until August, either, we're promising. I'm hoping that, uh, after I should report about this exercise, we'll help improve our odds to get, uh, get funds, but it's all up in the air right now.
Um, just a community transportation grant that we've had for the last few years, this last year's kind of resulted in a few different activities. Wanted to work with local entities and getting bike racks out in front of their businesses or locations, so that people who do wanna ride a bike, have a place they can line up and secure while they're doing their business. Um, supporting those that have internal, companies that have internal stairwells. Research has proven that if you make those a little more welcoming, people are more likely to take those, uh, but the health benefits and that up and down, so there's some signage. Support looking with St. Luke's, Mercy, City Hall, uh, those entities, we're also approaching others that have internal stairwells, with a, kind of implementing stairwell campaign. Uh, we've got a private pilot project with two swimming pools, and looking at providing healthier food options within their concessions that they offer. Uh, you might have seen on the news, the walking school bus, that was pilot dollars we received, um, for two middle schools to work with those neighborhoods. To begin to organize kids and walking to schools in groups with discreet buildings, so that it's safer for them, along with the physical benefit. And then, uh, we just, uh, two weeks, was it last Friday, we did a, there's a walkability expert in town, you might have seen on the news. That took a look at when you're doing your planning of your street skates, uh, what is it you can do for small entities to improve both the visual, the impression of it, and also to understand how people feel more safe when walking on the streets. Uh, one of the things that it says on the table in our building is, we have two sides that have absolutely no windows in, and they say when a facility is not at windows, that at least gives the appearance that somebody is observing what's going on in the street. There's less likely that people feel safe and comfortable in walking along there. So there's just some, many small things within that. And then, uh, last, one of the biggest changes is the insurance repair just funds that we've received through the Senator Thies role. They're moving towards all funding, going towards healthcare coalitions. Uh, we elected in Woodbury County, we're not interested in going to full formal five one C three, so we have signed this big, uh, informal agreement with both Mercy and St. Luke's. Could be a cooperative planning in that area, and also purchasing of supplies that are identified through a GAPS assessment, and we can join with that. Um, other than that, working with John, avoid phone installation process, we'll see how that goes out.
Any new bugs?
Uh, no, I think we have a little nor virus thing, let school out for the summer, so I, I just suspended it, but. In this day and time, keep your food safe, wash your hands, and if you're not feeling well, don't prep food, and don't go to public events. Anything hard work?
Plenty more.
I wasn't going so quick.
We are just, uh, basically doing our, the, the year administrative work, and, uh. Projects are to try to deal with legislation that occurred this year, and, um, we're going to cap our office, so we are also working with the Department of Homeland to. Be a part of developing the rules for implementing some of these things like the, the vacuum, and so that's what I have to do, there's a couple other items, so, it'll be pretty important, uh. My opinion, the legislature is eroding our tax base year after year with all the special reductions and exemptions for special interests, and, um. I think that's too bad, because the accessory law is, and the tax base is supposed to be non illegal, so that it stays clean, and it is marked value period of the act. And then they can do whatever they want to with credit and sanctions, but instead, past few years, they've, uh. There's so many special rules on how you assess certain properties that you're, uh. You're no longer guaranteed a credible tax, it's credible, it's cracked according to the legislature, but it is not purely market value like you've presented on in the past. I think that's something you need to realize, and, uh, if you have a, a say or concern about it, you know, be aware and get your input when you can, that's what we're trying to do. We just kind of get success rate like that, you know, we say, well, we do this a certain way, but, but it's the way, the trend is moving, so just be aware of that, and. Um, again, assessors are trying to be involved in rules so that the rules are by the same process state in what we do, and, uh, we'll take it as far as possible.
We're, we're, we're just trying to figure out what the legislation did, um, with mental health funding, uh, this year. Uh, there were a couple of releases on, uh, May thirty first, explaining what they did, and what amount of money they will be extending to the counties, but. Then also the percentage that the county will have to owe the state, because the state say there's so much money, um, so it's. It is really kind of laughable, if it didn't affect so many people, um, that's where we're at.
So we don't know where we're at?
No, we do, we don't.
Where is it?
We, we, we know what the, we know what the language says, do we know what kind of vegetarian that, that has? They're gonna give us the forty seven, twenty eight, but they're gonna decide how much money they save us. And out of any money they save us, the county then has to pay them back eighty percent of what they saved us, and that has to come out of the forty seven, twenty eight. So they're giving it to us with this hand, and taking away this hand in this, the state payment program, they say that that was included in the D H S budget. However, their interpretation, D H S's interpretation of that is that legal settlement goes away July ninth, so if they're living in your county, they're a resident, they're not a state case anymore, so you're going back to some hospital individuals.
Sir, is it mine?
Isn't it, though, that, now you understand why I'm saying we're trying to determine what, what they're doing?
Thank you for that raise, I'm checking back.
I just thought, it was just a day, just like outside.
Is I sat looking at that, or, I mean, who's gonna interpret all that, when, when can we expect to?
Well, I, I would for them, because, I mean, you know, within the next two weeks, obviously, we've got to be ready to go July one. The good news is, is that, well, if there is any good news, we did not budget relying on that forty seven, twenty eight, and we did not rely upon them giving us the state payment program money. Um, so our budget, as we did it, should be good. Good to go without any changes other than what we've already put in place. Uh, the case management, part of the case management for the intellectually disabled individuals is not going to be touched, uh, they did make that decision. Um, the case management for the chronic criminal ailment, however, is being replaced with the Royal Care Act and, um, mandatory participation in medical homes. So that said, in my, in my opinion, very negative impact on who is representing those individuals.
Mark?
Um, we're busy with construction right now, the, uh, paving on D fifty four, which is the O two Danbury Road is, uh. Should be rolling by the, uh, end of the week, uh, all milling is done out there, uh, road's gonna be closed through traffic. We just had a letting on another structure, uh, replacing a small bridge with a corby about pipe. We checked bits on that, but that'll be, uh, three replacements of both the bridges in that area between, uh, Mobile, Pearson, and Highway twenty and the county line, so. We're, we're starting to knock back some of the bridges that are, uh. In problems, I guess. Toward, uh, middle of summer, there will be a project down on, uh, C F Industries, the first thing that folks will see down there is, uh, new pings and flashers of the railroad crossing, the road apparently serves. C F Industries and, uh, the North Neal Facility. Work with D O T on pavement replacement project from I twenty nine to Fort Neal Road on two hundred and sixtyth Street, so. Uh, we've got a lot of work going on right now, both in project development and projects that are, that are being worked on. It's gonna be a busy six to eight months for us as we start ramping up on, uh, bridge projects and, uh. Getting things done with the, uh, price bracket of C F Industries, it's kind of a nice problem, pal, I guess, so, have some money to make some improvements, so, we're looking forward to that as a part of it. That's kind of all I have, every day, unless somebody's got some other things to do.
James?
You guys are doing a great job.
That's why I called them, they need a little reading. Chair?
Thanks to John for helping us a lot with the, uh, getting some of the things up on the website that we needed to, we showed up. People struggle with the, uh, gun permits. It's pretty self-explanatory, it's got a lot of red, red things on it, from the sea, but somehow they're missing that mark, and I don't, I don't think John can do any more to make it clearer, so.
Different John.
No, you, you don't make that word, John. So, we found that, uh, we've added a few things that had beneficial ones. Um, you know, we've got a Facebook page, and, uh, it's gonna open up tremendous, uh, response from the public. Things that we got, we got going on that I think is, uh, something that Jackie's, uh, I don't know who, a lot of you through the Facebook page, through updates, I'm gonna let you tell you, it's, uh. It is a good, for us, the public image, and we pull a lot of things on there that we're doing. So, we've had very good responses. Recently met with, uh, one of the civil service members, we've added a new civil service member, Paul Lundberg, I believe he was agent, Red Collar's place. And so we are gonna meet with them, we're trying to, uh, make some changes in our civil service, um, higher rate qualifications. Maybe up to them, standard to, um, Sonya or college or military, which that's kind of determined.
Well, I think Mr. Lundberg has been approved by the board.
Yeah, I don't think so, I don't know where it's at, you know, I know the change, but not know how long that takes, so. He, he was gonna meet with us, I think that might have been in the late, so we met the floor, Dennis, that was out of town.
That's a board appointment, correct?
Is it a board, I don't, I don't know what branch it is.
I don't either.
Was that the sheriff's appointment, or?
Uh, you know, uh.
The county attorney? Whose appointment is it?
I think, I don't think the sheriff is, you guys are going to look at me, I think it's board gets one or two, and county attorney gets one, but I think.
The sheriff, I think it's Warren, county attorney, the board.
Okay.
So it depends on who collars, collars mustn't be J's.
I'm not sure, not sure. Me, and, and that's, I'll give you a chance, uh, twenty four seven, uh, Mark, Jackie, and George all went, and I think we saw how efficient that program was. Hopefully, the courts, uh, like it, and I think you as a board, are very impressed with, uh, all that work as well. I couldn't believe the volume of people that come in, and, uh, if they don't have the money, uh, on some of them, they just take that deal right off, and that's the end of that, so. One of the things that I don't think people understand, and I'm not gonna bore you with some of this stuff, and, uh, the ignition, the, the ignition lock for people in Iowa. Is it near as effective as in South Dakota, because in Iowa, you, you just give a breath sample, and who knows who might give that breath sample, they just leave the car on cue, and, uh. So, that, that could work, in South Dakota, they take your picture in the car while you're giving a breath, it's a lot more, a lot more effective. Uh, so that, I, I, we were just thoroughly impressed with, uh, twenty four seven hours run. We have a place that we can do it, uh, parking, I don't think would be an issue, because if we ran it from six thirty or seven to nine, there's not a lot of parking. Issues around nine in the morning, they become later in the day, so, uh, that, that was that. Court security, we continue to have our meetings, and we're working towards some, some, uh, effort to provide security here at the courthouse. We're working on our jail renovation, uh, I think that, uh, hopefully, they can go in contract construction in July or, uh. And we have been putting off bits for all our cameras, I think our cameras can help us immensely in some of the, uh, past litigation that may have come up. I think that, uh, a camera about every part of that building is going to be a tremendous thing. And then last thing, the twenty four seven, um, just waiting for. For twenty eighty, excuse me, for USI and Mary, we're going, these are right and ready, so, this is the original, there is no.
The other said we need to have the originals.
These, these are the originals that we made up, I don't know if there's anything else.
Those are it.
This is it, so.
Okay.
We're, we're just ready, and they're asking, and, uh, we've been meeting with, uh, some of the towns already, and, uh, I think, uh. Been working on getting their city ordinances inputted in our computer, so that, uh, that will be available for some of this, we're pretty excited. Other than that, that will be it for the sheriff's.
Okay. Mr. Elder, your name was taken in vain while you were not here.
I was, uh, home boiler out of Prosperoy, so I was in a little busier situation than most. It is the, uh, cooling C F, and we're ready to go with the cooling everywhere, we've replaced the new children or air conditioning in Prosperoy. Which uses half the power when it's running, and sits off half the time because it's caught up in cycle off. And it's got a capability going down fifteen percent before it shuts down, so we're drawing less than half the power we did to run the old air conditioning. And right now, we are replacing, uh, it's cooling season, so we're doing all our boilers, uh, we're calibrating all of our burners, replacing the new boilers today. At Prosperoy, the old one's coming out, and it's ready to go in.
Have you heard about the leaks that you now are engaging?
Yes, I have, we're getting, it's under warranty, they've been out once, haven't got it yet. We're getting, it's under warranty, they've been out once, haven't got it yet, but they're coming out again.
Okay, and...
There's one at the LEC above.
They went out, they were out too, that's from Idaho, or not Idaho, Ruffin. They repaired one that we had and overlooked, or didn't find the other one, they're coming back out.
How long ago was that roof replaced at the LEC?
Uh, they just did that probably ten years ago.
It was ten? It seemed like they were up there, we had those leaks four or five years ago.
Oh, no, it's been a long time, but it's still under warranty, it's got a twenty-year warranty.
All right, you're on top of that.
Yep, I'll lock out them all at once and get them on their way out of here.
Any else, Mark?
That's all good.
Okay.
Uh, over the recorder's office, we have two clerks retired. And that's impacted, uh, the, the, the real estate work done. But the board reauthorized a position from a rural economic development and that person transferred in permanently into the recorder's office. And we completed interviews yesterday to, to fill the second position. So hopefully we'll get back on board there for the work that we're trying to keep up. Over there, we've incurred a bit of overtime trying to keep up with the daily work. Uh, over in the Auger's office, Gene has been training lots of folks on the time card system. That's gone pretty well, reasonably well. And the next big group of people to get involved in that would be the deputies actually doing it out in their vehicles. In the election side, we have, we're preparing for the cycle of elections this year. It's the school board election, the city primary election, Sioux City, and the city council elections. And what we'll be doing is moving from twenty-eight polling places to fourteen vote centers. We'll hold public hearings in order to try to educate people. We'll be doing lots of mailing to folks in Sioux City. But the difference between a vote center and a polling place is that with the vote center, you can go to any one of those places to vote rather than being relegated to just going to your, your polling place. Uh, we've been working with the school, we're trying to reduce the number of permanent polling places that are in schools. We've, there were thirteen of them that were in schools, we've reduced five of those, we're down to eight. We're going to send out to the school board, asking them to try to plan some sort of in-service event or something on that general election day, which only occurs once every two years so that the students aren't actually in the schools when we have elections. So that has been, that's become a real issue nationwide. A lot of places are doing the same thing, trying to, the elections out of the schools at the same time the students are there. Getting a little bit of pushback from traditionalists who say that you should be able to see your parents come in to, uh, the students should be able to see their students come in, or their parents come in to vote, but the offset of that is the security. With all the newer schools that have been built, they have security systems in there that, the schools are locked down on a normal day, but on election day, they're wide open to anybody that could come into them. So we're trying to work with them to deal with that.
Thank you, sir. Karen? Mark? David?
Hi, I'm Howard.
Jackie?
I'll stay here.
So you're gonna see the, the website?
Are you ready, Mr. Floyd?
I'm ready, I'm definitely...
Did, did you do this, or did you...
Yeah, yeah, in my spare time. Yes, you don't believe me?
I do, I do.
Again, a, a new look to the website and, no, I did not put it together, so it's, it's gonna be a little bit challenging for me. But we're gonna have Larry's space so that the pictures... What's that, twenty?
Then draw more kids.
Yeah.
Karen, well, your jobs are fixed.
Listen to that tech talk, we're talking about hands.
Right, um, again, we, we have some tabs up here that indicate some of the more highly utilized sections of our current websites. We've sort of emphasized those in the top right-hand corner. And it's hard to see here, but sheriff, these are the most popular sites. Typically you have the sheriff's site, the assessor's site, and the supervisor's site are the top three sites. Again, I alluded to these three new, three new applications we put together for, for the sheriff. One is gun permits, others jail search and warrants. Example, jail search. Um, you can do a search on the, on the current inmates. And I can't read it from here.
Inmate name.
What's that?
Inmate name, date.
Okay, all right, Karen, if you can type a name like, like Dean up there, you can probably...
Why does it say Blackhawk County?
That's an example of... That's an example of a whole word, right. Right, sir.
Sorry, if I can look for inmates and... I just say those probably are...
It's not in the final form yet.
Right, you're right, we're still in development, I wasn't planning on demonstrating today, so...
I'm sorry, I'm on the spot, but this shows how flexible you really are.
Yeah, that's right, so, here we go. But again, we'll have photos and, and the statistics on, on the demographics of that person, so. Or we're sending everything to Blackhawk County.
Yeah.
It's all right.
That's a cool, those websites are cool. Let's see if documents are out.
Is this the old one or the new one, Dave? No, that's all new, that's all new, that's all new. Again, working on this, this whole process. Warrants will be another one, again, they're not in their finished state, but again, you'll be able to complete these processes through the website. Properties, I'm gonna go back up to the, I'm sorry, John, this part is the part that I put in. Yeah, this is, this has been up for about three months now. This is the, you're working on a new version? New version, yes, I'm sorry. John, John's urging, well, help us tremendously from traffic coming into our, our office all the time, to tighten up personnel. This would be really helpful for us, because they can do it all online and send it off. Again, we'll send off this, this web address to all, all department heads, so you guys can take a peek at it and elicit feedback for you guys so we can make changes. So, um, properties and all that's in other... I can't see it from here.
You can pay your taxes, you share, sell, actually, I dropped it.
I can't see it from here.
Can't see it from there?
You need to have glasses. Vision.
Right. Property service, again. Again, a lot of the same look, this pulls up actually rolls, pulls up the beacon site. But again, we need you guys' feedback on this stuff, so. And a big part is your departments, each have your own respective pages on here, so if you, your content is a little dated, then that needs to be upgraded. Now, when you guys have stuff in overlord pages, you can update this all, all by yourself. So a little bit of training, it's called the content management system. If you guys have content to put on your respective pages, you can do that yourself, you don't have to call us and say, I need to put this PDF out there, I need to put this picture out there. You guys can do that yourself.
That's kind of all of it, isn't it? If you get...
Right, right.
John, is all our passwords or access still the same?
I don't know that.
Mine's not.
Your password's not the same?
No. Okay, then, what's the way to contact me?
When I, when we send out your, the test address, again, the feedback, if you want training or if you want whatever your access codes are, we'll be able to, we'll go back and forth on that.
Would you be putting like links to a Facebook page on the website, or will there be any kind of link?
I believe that's on the, on the main page here.
Oh, okay.
So there is a...
Oh, fine, okay.
It's a site that Karen...
We need more likes, so there's only seventy-four.
Facebook.
Huh?
I'm Facebook.
You know, you'll win a free pillow if you get a thousand likes.
You got a video of more meetings, we should be able to list off to the side of what, what's been put out there, so. I'm not sure why it doesn't show up right now, but there will be the difference.
John, if we ever got to the point where we wanted to videotape work of the dust, it's on the front page. There's no, that'd be a problem on file size or would you want to dedicate to...
It should, it shouldn't be an issue.
We don't meet nearly as often as the supervisors.
Right, the, the key is who's gonna run the controls that, that comes on...
I think that would pass.
Right, but yeah, that all can be posted. Yes.
Well, isn't that why we did YouTube videos, so I didn't take up server space?
Correct. Again, we'll shoot this out to you, if you can cruise around and give us your feedback, if you have more suggestions, then we'll just go with it.
Thank you, John.
Does there, anyone else have anything?
I got a question. Is there any money in the budget for control systems in the HPA C?
I mean?
Any money in the budget for control systems in, in the building for control or HPA C?
That should be, that's already in there, is this, I mean, is there controls?
Yeah, there is no money for what he's talking about, I don't feel the...
Are you talking about something for NBC I C C?
I'm talking for the building to be able to have temperature control in the buildings. Well, to do agree with you, there are now on the building, I don't think you could be in a more comfortable building down there. Maybe not in your area, but as far as the building, I don't think that would be wrong.
Right here, right here. Well, I guess, there's not room for computer-adjusted temperature control, that's all I'm looking at.
Anything you have for five years, it's so outdated now, they just completely outdated.
And that's why I was asking, I'm not pointing a finger at anything.
We've been having on that, we have for the new, uh, on end and all the control, or control.
I don't think it's in our C I P budget, is it?
Do we need to...
I don't think so.
Maybe try this one once.
Do we need to make sure that we give them anything?
And we may have somebody left over too.
Okay. No, I appreciate, I mean, Mark's office is very responsive as far as the trouble with the... We're just wondering ways to do it.
If there's something that we can do, help out, if there's extra money, we will...
Are you guys better in your department?
It's better, it's better, yes.
Well, that's in the right direction.
Right, I just, instead of so manual, can be automated, and that's what I was circling for, so. Just wonder if there's any provisions for that.
Do you have any extra money in your budget?
Hence the reason I asked.
Doesn't pay that question.
I mean, I retract all my statements.
This is the second one of these. If there's a way to improve them, by all means, let me know. If you want a different format, if you don't want, no. But I think it's a good idea to get together, but we don't see one another that often, doesn't seem, fun to see more than others. That's it, unless, if somebody's got something they want.
Well, if you got it.